... discussion items.
Okay, we're gonna jump down to Tricia, you ready?
Am I ready?
Yeah.
What am I ready for? Wait, are you jumping right down to me?
Yes, let's do it.
Well, okay then.
Let's do that.
I was just sharing with you.
While we're paying attention. Tricia, is that?
I'm always on, always ready. I was just creating a folder with the report cards in for those of you that have your devices. We just wanted to give you an opportunity after the report cards have been out, after some of the information is out there, if you had any questions to address at a deeper level that we really don't have the time for in the regular board meetings. So I was just creating a folder with them so you could review them if it was gonna jog anything. And then we also have kind of a comparison sheet from where we were the last time we had a report card in 1314. They push that pause button and then we have our report card now. So I created that comparison sheet for you that is in this folder that I was going to share with you because I had time on the agenda. I'm gonna fight.
I got it.
Oh, you did.
So where will the folder be?
I'll share with you right this second. Yes. Go on, time.
Yes. Are you emailing it as well yourself?
I'm sharing it with you, which will be a link in your email.
Hey, you should get yours right now. There you go.
Well, there it is. Hit refresh.
I did it.
Oh.
It's kinda, it's kinda. Oh, Patty.
Oh.
Well, you didn't do it as a group.
No, I didn't. Jeez, Marie.
We can be one patient.
Well, I've realized.
Okay. Shazam. Oh, shoot. Nancy, you went to your Hudson. Don't worry, I can fix this. There you are.
Sounds good.
So, all four report cards are in there. You know, we have an elementary, middle, and a high school that all filter in the district report card. So all of those scores and, um, hi, Jan, all filter into the district one. Area by area, if you'd like to chat about some things that stick out, if you have some things that you want to talk about. But if you click on the sheet that I sent you, the copy of Somerset and Report Card Priority Areas, that kinda gives you a better picture. When the new data came out, because it's based on different scores, different calculations, they said, "Do not compare overall score to overall score." It's really not a good way to work with the data. It's not a good way to make some decisions or to evaluate programming. They said, "Go down and look at the priority areas in order to give you a better picture of how your students perform," and then some action steps behind it that we can put in place for improvement for this year. So if you take a look at what I shared, the copy of Somerset Report Card Priority Areas, it might give you a better picture. The district, of course, is the overarching, you know, place where all these scores kinda filter into. High school, middle school, and then elementary, last report card to this report card, and in green you can see areas where we had gains. So I'll give you a second, and then if you have any questions, we are here for you.
Priority areas.
So the priority areas are the four areas of the report card that were scored on based off of our standardized assessment data and a few other calculations. If you look on the left side, you'll see four, the first four that are grayed out. So student achievement is priority area number one. They use the Ford Exam mostly, breaks three through eight, and then the ACT only at the high school. And they look at achievement of our kids against a standard, a benchmark. Student growth is the second priority area. They break each of these down into ELA and math as well. Growth is how groups of students compare to growth connected to other groups across the state. So equal to equal. It's kind of a value-added comparison where they take our kids, compare them to like kids across the state and how they grew. Closing the gaps, different groups of kids are considered for this. For example, at our high school, you have to have at least 20 students in a group in order to start looking at that score, or 20 students in a supergroup. And that group might be economically disadvantaged, as in our case, we have over 20 economically disadvantaged kids who took the ACT. That's who the high school scores were built around. It could also be EL or our students with disabilities. And then the last area is on track and post-secondary readiness. This is a marker that should indicate how our kids, if they're ready for college and career. So in that goes a couple different scores, our graduation rate, our attendance rate, you know, if they're here, third grade, ELA, eighth grade, math. And then, it used to be ACT participation, but since the last report card, we assess every junior across the state. So that's why that's grayed out. The bottom is not a priority area. The bottom of student engagement indicators are places where if you don't meet certain goals, you get ding, five points for each one. So if our absentee rate is greater, you can see our goal is to be greater than, well, I was gonna put it the other way, less than 2% absentee, our dropout rate or test participation has to be above 95%. So we did not have any gains. We met all those parameters. So the four growth areas, Katie, back to your original question, the gray area is about those.
I'm sorry, Katie. So, under student growth in high school?
Yes.
Without football?
There are no scores for that area because growth, they do not use the ACT, or that, sorry, they don't use the Aspire. In order to have a growth goal, you have to have a pre and a post test. So our other grade levels, you'll have a test in third grade and a test in fourth grade. So they can measure growth of that student over a one-year period. Test in fourth grade, another test in fifth grade, so on. But the kids take it in eighth grade, and then the state does not have a contract to get ninth grade or 10th grade scores. So then it comes just the ACT as a level three. So they're not able to give us a growth score at our high school level. That's standard practice there. I'm ready.
High school math.
High school math. Would you like to address some of that if you want me to?
The high school math, this is the last year of the traditional high school course sequencing where the course content is re-watched doing. Next year will be interesting, we'll have all three groups going in with Eureka Math that more aligns closely to the core that Wisconsin adopted a few years ago. We chose to phase that in over three years rather than change it all at once for everyone. So two years ago, we began with the ninth grade Algebra I course. Last year was the 10th grade, or ninth grade Algebra I course, and then we added geometry. And then this year, we added Algebra II. So we put things into place to hopefully address the math scores. It's something that we've worked closely with each of those PLC, those groups, to look at pacing, making sure we're on track, the sequencing, how do we help backfill some of the curriculum that they need and the standards that they haven't met yet.
Just to follow up to that, because I'm confused, because if Eureka started two years ago?
Yep.
But our scores were higher two years ago.
Right. So this is the, this group right here is the last group that has never seen Eureka because we phased it in. So our current 11th grade students this year will have only known Eureka Math at the high school. All other students going through knew the traditional approach to the core.
Is Eureka fairly common?
It's much more rigorous in addressing the core standards, the Common Core. And the traditional approach doesn't address those at the level of thinking and understanding that Eureka or the Common Core standards ask for.
Math at our high school has, and across our district, has been a topic of conversation for a few years. Putting some different training in place, putting some different materials in place, putting some different supports in place. We just had on Friday another training for our high school to understand how to best use the materials to help high-level learners as well as support other learners. Pacing, keeping up pace, so we're making sure content is delivered. The other component with that, you'll see later when we go through the course handbook, is we're addressing some of our courses also so that we can meet the needs of our kids, meet them where they are, and help them achieve greater. So you will see that coming through with that, too. So it's kind of a multifaceted approach to really helping our kid in, all kids in math is what I really should say, all kids.
So, you know, this is our numbers, and we're not supposed to compare and all that stuff, but do the other school districts see the same kind of declines that we saw? I mean, are we on trend and the same pace with all the other school districts? You know, I mean, is this, should we expect it to increase as things go on?
The, to answer your question for the high school, there were two districts that saw 15-point decrease, much more severe and drastic than ours. There are three districts that were within 1.8 points of meeting, and then two districts that exceeded the rest of us. So we're right on average with the schools around us in our conference. The one piece that, if we were to compare apples to apples, and in looking at the report card, there were some calculation pieces because of the subgroups, the ELL students, the students with disabilities, and the low socioeconomic students. If we would've factored those in like the, and like the top district had, we would've been third in the conference in looking at apples to apples that way. The one subgroup that we had in it brought us down a little bit, but we're gonna address that and we're gonna get better. If you look at any time there's an implementation of something new, there's an implementation of dip traditionally, not always, but we're hoping that this is our dip and now we rebound from it.
So I mean, are you speaking specifically to math when you're using those numbers, Chris?
No, that's just across on the report cards. The top district in our conference didn't have any students in the closing gaps that met the 20 threshold. So their graduation rate counted entirely for that. So they got double points for that. And if we were to look at apples to apples that way, that district would've stayed top. The next district would've stayed at second, but we would've jumped up to number three rather than where we are.
So do other schools in our conference use Eureka?
At the high school level? No.
No.
I have a question on the PLC, are middle school and high school are both in the PLC? Or the math specifically?
They don't meet together. They meet separately.
So, and with the PLC of the high school, are they all on board with Eureka? Or we don't really know?
No, we do know. They struggle with pacing. They think it's too rigorous for our students. That's why we called in the experts on Friday, and we had a wonderful kind of Zoom conference with practitioners in Massachusetts who are all using it in a district that's just a little bit bigger than we are, who had some really great data because they are mandated to do end-of-course exams, and they're seeing 14-point gains, 14-point gains. Gave them some great pointers on how to differentiate instruction, which quite frankly, doesn't happen all the time at the high school level. You know, like we see at our elementary school, right? Because they're in and out and what have you. Really gave them some great pointers about pacing, and then we committed them with those teachers. So they shared modified assessments that worked better in our period, in the minute-period day. They shared updated pacing guides where they went through and they took out redundancy kind of components. So they've kind of created their own now PLC that stretches beyond Somerset. So it was a great day. It was a great day as far as learning together and seeing that, yes, you can do this, and yes, it's very different than traditional instruction where someone stands and promises and delivers, and it's, it's on the page. So it was a great day.
It's always hard to make a change, and it does take, you know, we said we've got to do the four years before we'll see. It's just be patient. We have to realize, too, it's hard, it's right before, ah, we see that.
Do we spend the same amount of time on ELA as we do with math? Classroom time, do we have the resources, maybe the aspects?
At the high school? Yeah, it's the, it's the same amount of time. All classes are about 57 minutes. Students that struggle, especially coming in the ninth grade, we've bumped that class right next to the classroom time, so they have an extra half an hour, and they stay right there, and then they have some guided practice and homework help, and so they can get the instruction and then start and get help on concepts if they're struggling.
At the middle school level, the answer to that is no. You have 100 minutes a day for ELA and 50 for math. So, and that is something consistently that I've been trying to problem solve with the math department. Comes down to people, to be honest with you, to be able to run. That, I'm looking at some creative scheduling options to try to reduce the amount of math time. My math crew has been very creative in pulling and doing some reteaching with kids during our intervention blocks. So kids that need a more intensive intervention are pulled, and then the math teachers are working. And so I have a science teacher also working to reduce the reteaching with those kids that are kind of on the bubble of getting to that proficiency level where we need them to be. So we're doing, they're getting the 50 minutes of math, and then one day a week, they're getting an additional 30 minutes of reteaching instruction. So we're trying to find ways to work within our schedule right now.
Is it just easier to have, like, more ELA staff?
Well, the way we were set up originally was teaching class and a writing class. And so when the Common Core came out, it blended them two together with, you know, standards thus wide, and so it was, I had the ELA teachers already, and so it was logical to go, to go that route at that point in time.
I also, we conferred and we looked at the top performing schools that were working for the middle school. Because we know middle school, I mean, if you've ever attended a staff meeting at the middle school, you would just, eyes would be up this way because they talk about really tough stuff, and they have really good conversation, and yet we're not seeing them as else. I don't think they're represented well in the figures because it is amazing the kinds of things they tackle as a team in that building. So I chatted with the two top schools, and both of them said it comes right down to time. They've doubled their math instruction time at the two top schools, and just giving the kids the time they need developmentally as well as with the rigor of the core and faculty gap. So that's something that, schedule-wise, can be very tricky because where you take, you have, you know, you gotta take from somewhere else. But as we look at those schools, how they're performing, and what they're getting, what they're doing for their kids with their kids, it seems like a logical next step that we need to kind of move forward with.
I'm sorry, were these top performing schools in Wisconsin?
Oh, in our middle border.
They're in our conference.
Oh, yeah, we, in fact, this Friday, we have another middle border meet and confer. We all, we get together often, and we talk about things like this part, and we're all doing the same work. So we can learn from each other on how we're getting it done, or what barriers they came across, and when we get there. Yeah. It was Amory and Osceola. Amory's been at the top as far as the middle border, middle school, for a lot of years. It's, they go after it. This year, they were dethroned and not happy at all. I mean, truly, this is the conversations that, and in talking with Amory, they said, "Well, Osceola did it. They doubled their math time." I mean, it is about time, I think, it's.
And I know, in talking with one of Amory, when she had said she was concerned because they had a lot of retiring in that particular department, and so it was, that was a big content for her.
Science and math are the two topics. There were short staff there.
Have we identified benchmarks schools that we would choose and we consistently compare ourselves against for goal setting?
We have not. You asked that question one other meeting as well. You know, we, we look across, we've got people like Pointe, who we know we're following because they're the same size, they're close to who we are. They're implementing standards-based grading and assessment for learning, grading for learning K-12. They've got it all out there. We meet up with them at conferences, we phone communicate. But we don't have, I know Hudson has identified the targeted three target schools that they watch what's happening. We stick pretty close with our middle border, even though we are not apples to apples when we start looking at our students with disabilities, when we start looking at our economically disadvantaged, even our ELS. We are not the same community, even though we're so close to each other. But we do spend a lot of time together and learning from each other. So not like Hudson has done, where they have a formal target, 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 but we do have our people we keep our eye on.
I wonder, too, about looking closely at Richmond and Hudson as we have those conversations, only because when people are choosing to move over here, those are really going to be their three choices geographically. And so we need to be able to communicate what it is that we offer here compared to what's offered in those two places. Not that we will compete exactly with them, but that we can highlight what is unique about Somerset. And unless we've clearly defined what's going on there and can clearly define what it is we're offering here, I don't think we'll be able to promote ourselves as well.
There's a significant size difference between those three schools, and we're just not gonna be able to offer exactly what they have, but.
Well, I mean, for the high school at St. Christ Central, they're the ones that knocked it out of the park. New Richmond scored .4 at both of us. You know, I think we need to look at St. Christ Central a little more.
Katie, if you'd like to answer, you can answer those questions. At the elementary, we have 120 minutes a day for literacy and 90 minutes for math. And that's, I would say the state recommended would be, well, that or slightly above what state recommends would be that. I mean, 120 for literacy and a 90 for math are what's on paper and what should be. I think a teacher would tell you, you have things that you didn't have on occasion, you know, your library time, your bed time, your study time, those things, but kind of perfect day if those are there. The 120 for math, for literacy, 90 is successive. 30 of it may get put somewhere else, that writing separate, just said to ones, but the 90 for math is always successive.
Then New Richmond is just wondering how we can, what do we attribute our over 10-point gain at the elementary, too? And that's one of them. I mean, when we moved to Eureka, in particular, the rigor connected with that and the kinds of student, the kinds of collaboration, the kids work together, and we just can't do that in a traditional 15-minute period. We need more time. And that was a big struggle for our elementary teachers as well because it's taking too long. You know, time is so precious.
I'd say that 90 minutes of math is a big jump compared to what probably most people do, I wouldn't say. Where I came from, it was 60 and maybe even 45, but 90. And they need it. Because Eureka at the elementary, if you look at our math scores, has made a major difference. We've had it for three and a half years. And it's, it's been great. And I think for some of the parents in here of kids who've gone through it, it was tough right away because it's different than how we learned it. It very much so is. And we've had parent sessions to try to help and don't want to stop with that, but I think it's made a big difference, and I think up the line, we'll see that as kids continue to get consistent with it. It was hard if you just started as a fourth grader. My first year, we had fourth graders who just started. It's hard.
I am not sorry I missed that.
Yeah, it's hard. But now our second graders who've had it, K-1, 2, and this year our JKs, oh, last year our JKs started with, this year, they're pretty good.
Was it at the same time that you devoted more to it? I mean, did that overlap?
Yes.
They were the, they coincided.
Yes.
I mean, the, the new standards demand more of what's going on in the class. Kids have to be much more highly engaged. They have to be able to communicate mathematically and figure things out in a way that isn't just doing 40 problems on a page. The rigor of the standards is much greater, which makes instruction has to look different. Materials have to support that. And so when Eureka came through, there was, just trying to figure out how, and it's becoming more efficient, we're getting better at just juggling picking and choosing, because there's a lot there, and you don't have to do it all. And that's what really helped our high school was like, hey, hey, guys, you know, and you should've seen how cute we go, right? We have this cute little screenshot of us, like, Brady Bunch, you know, with all of our little headphones on, all look. I wouldn't be in the middle, but that didn't work out. But when we brought in the new resource and really implemented our Wisconsin State standard to each of the Common Core, it just demanded that we needed more time.
So I'd say this year, we're the best we've been at the scheduling part because we've really made it a priority. And this year, I, the last two years we've had one scheduled, I redid it this year, and so was able to align it, make it work even better with, on top of that, so kids are struggling, we have an additional 30 minutes for math and our reading. So kind of layering that on top and making that work. Because these improvements aren't going to stay. Eureka is really.
So if you have that, what are the comments that you're hearing from the parents? I mean, that are, that are engaged and are helping their kids and, from what it was the day that we started, when everyone was freaking out, to what it is today? Are the conversations better? And if they are conversations, have we celebrated that with quotes in the paper and getting parents to be the people that are saying, "We have this big improvement, and this is why?" Because to me, that would be the kind of positive stuff you would want for the public to see. It's like, you know, it's like anything else, what you're, the base that you're creating is what's gonna move up into the other schools. So I would think that now's the time to be celebrating with parents and students and what they're learning, and start publicizing that so that we do have that thing to market because we can show that we have a documented improvement. So instead of worrying about the big picture, focus on this, and we're moving this up slowly, and maybe that might help getting the word out there?
Good idea.
I just think that involving parents that way and celebrating will get the community to buy in because when you look at it and go, "Ah, we're at the bottom," that just sucks. But if you look at it and go, "Look at what these kids are doing. Our teachers are doing their job, they're going above and beyond," and the parents, I'm sure, are very thankful that there is such, such an increase at the elementary. We need to be celebrating that and getting it out there so that, you know, hey, this is what the picture is today, but in two years, these scores are gonna be up at the middle school. And in two years after that, they're gonna be moving to the high school. So we have, we're starting to create a system of success, but you can't start it at the 12th grade, you have to start it at kindergarten. Yeah, be right on, Katie.
There's a lot of different areas that are indicators of success. And that's, you remember back a few months ago, I brought that document out, the world's best workforce. It's not just test scores. It's all the program. I mean, we've talked about it at the cabinet level, of putting a document like that together that really tells the whole story. Because even when you crunch the numbers and you look at statistics, I mean, you can play with these any way you want. We're still pretty much in the ballgame, but the way it gets reported, you know, there's, puts us in a unfavorable, unfavorable spot, but we know we need to do some work, but it's coming. It's coming. And, you know, we look at, when you look at what's, what has to happen for next year, you know, there isn't a strategic plan to hold it to, but we know where our deficiency and our strengths are, and so we can use this type of information here to really make our planning for next year, but also using this information during the planning process, the strategic plan for us, to know what's our end game, what's our results. And I'll talk about that a little bit. Let's move up to the strategic plan.
Well, we'll take a look at the, at the board here, and I'm gonna walk through a few, few pieces that we're gonna, kind of the direction we're going to take. And what we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at reconstituting some of the work that's been done, just kind of reformatting, not throwing out any of the work, but putting it in a format that's a little bit easier to understand and flows a little bit better. And I'm gonna walk through a few pieces here. So we've got a session put together for December 15th, which is next Thursday. And what we're gonna do there is we're gonna revisit the mission and vision to create one statement rather than two statements, and I'll explain why. We're gonna revisit the belief statements for brevity and clarity. We're gonna redesign the strategic objectives, because right now, the strategic objectives have both the objectives and the strategies in one piece, which again, kind of make it a little cumbersome to handle. Again, I'm gonna walk through this and I'll show you. We need to develop strategies and also consider strategic delimiters, and I'll explain what those pieces are also. So, you know, real basic, you know, we have a mission. You know, a mission really says why we exist. The objectives is really what we're trying to achieve, and the strategies and result statements are the how we're going to achieve it. That's very, very basic. So we look at the. So we look at the mission first. The mission should state three things. Why do we exist? Who's our audience? And what are we going to do for that audience? And just gonna show you a comparison here. I'm gonna use my past district here on the left-hand side here. You know, if you read through that, it's real simple. It's got a tagline, "To educate, inspire, empower our diverse learners, to shape their futures, accomplish their dreams, and contribute positively to our local and global communities." It really says all those three things. Now, when you have a mission and vision, and this has been the age-old argument forever is which is which? Which is which? To me, vision is the first thing back in the 70s when we started creating vision statements. That's your dream, and then mission is how you're going to get there. But people have twisted that around several different ways. So when I look at what you have for mission, vision, I think it's really simple to take a look at that. The mission that you have right now is developing learners, empowering futures together, which is a great tagline too. But then the vision piece, "To become a premier community, bridging learners with their passionate pathways." To me, it could be a real easy tweet here, just to eliminate the vision part of it, just say, "Developing learners, empowering futures together in order to become a premier community, bridging learners with their passion pathways." One document, one statement. Okay, not wondering, are we working on a mission, mission or vision? It's a mission, but it, again, just by adding those two words, "in order to become." Again, this is going to be a committee to look at this. I'm just using this as an example. And, you know, you want to honor the work that the last group has done, but I think we see some really formatting pieces that will make it a little easier to understand. And I'm speaking from experience on this because I've been through planning processes a number of times. And the last one that we did five years ago, I mean, the results are disputable, and a lot of it is because people understand it, they get it. So leaving the mission behind us here, when you look at core, what we call core values, you call belief statements. And those are really, what do we hold sacred? How are we going to behave? And how do we treat people on this journey as we go through? And so, you know, what you have, if you look on the left-hand side, you have seven belief statements, we have seven core values. But core values are really short, concise statements, which is a little good, that, you know, like, all people have value, valuing and respecting differences, strength in the individual, community. People thrive when they feel connected, supported, affirmed. Everyone can learn. They're very short statements. When you look at what you have with belief statements here, the first one, you know, is almost a mission statement in itself. There's a lot of moving pieces here. And when you look at, where is this here? When I look at this document here and I get down to the second one, I don't want to read anymore. And you put that on a poster in the room and it's just, it's going to get lost. So what I would suggest, and again, I'm just using this as an example, again, this has to go through a committee process of redeveloping, but if you look at the one on the upper right, which is your first belief statement, you know, it could be something as simple as, "All people can thrive in our democratic society," or "All learners can acquire critical lifelong learner skills." And again, that's, I just threw that together very simply, but I took all seven of them and I just kind of chopped up a little bit to say, you know, if there's enough in here to keep it short and simple, there's, my whole administrative team in the past and principals, what have you, the CLT, everyone knew those core values by heart because they were just simple. And again, we're trying to look for rank and file and the community to even understand this. And again, they see something like this, they're going to look at it and they're just going to probably quit after the second one. Or right now, I mean, can any of you recite, do you know these by heart? You don't. And I know our board members do these by heart because we practice them, but they're simple. Of course, if you write them on the windshield of your motorcycle when you're traveling across the country, it's a good way to memorize them. So, so strategic objectives are the what we're going to do. And what they, they always tie back to your, your core values or your beliefs and your mission. And on the left, we had three strategic objectives, and you can kind of see, you know, the key words in there, benefit to community, goals and passions, their dreams, achieve their goals. And those are all words that are in the mission statement. When I look on the right-hand side, you know, there's, I only used two of yours because they're just so long that, you know, I wanted to show you just a little bit that, like on one and four, you've got, you've got leadership opportunities in two of them, but there's a lot of redundancy in some of these. And I think they can just be trimmed down a little bit to really be meaningful so people understand. If people understand the plan, it's just, you know, it's, you know, it's good stuff, but it's going to sit on a shelf if it's not, you know, easily understood. Strategies are really the how we're going to get, get our work done. And again, we had four, now, this is what you don't have. You don't have strategies yet, but again, we had, we had four strategies. And really what happens with these strategies, and I think I've showed, you know, some of these documents before, you can create things that are very simple, very clean to show the public or what have you, but you, strategy number one was, was about leadership in our, in our past district, and we had five result statements there. And out of those, those five things were to be achieved over the five years of the plan. But for each one of them, there was a document like this here where you'd have a team that looks at, like that first one, collaborative leadership team has a shared vision of skills and knowledge and dispositions necessary for successful leadership. Okay, they would come up with both the, the action plan, the cost benefits, and the benefits to the district. So the action team really worked to define the end results to be achieved and the terminal benefits, you know. And this was the only thing, that plan there that a team came up with was the only thing that had a little leeway to be, to be changed. Everything else with strategies and result statements are kind of carved in stone as far as we know what we're, we're working on. The one thing that I wanted to bring up here too is, and this is really, this is a really important piece that the group will have to struggle with, and it's called strategic delimiters. And that's how you protect the plan that's done and also staying focused. And that's a simple statement that, and this is the one we crafted, was, "We'll not accept or we will not adopt any new program or service unless it's consistent with the core values and contributes to the mission, or it's accompanied by the alignment or the reduction of current practice," which means, you know, if you're going to put something on a plate, you're going to take something off. Because everything we do now, you know, a lot of it has a shelf, like you don't always have to do that. But, you know, we're, planned abandon is tough in education because I've been doing that for 20 years. I just don't want to give up that lesson or what have you. We have to make some hard decisions. And the bottom one was a real key piece, "We'll not allow current practice or tradition to interfere with consideration of new ideas." So it's the old thing of, we've always done it that way. Doesn't work anymore. And I'll give you a real good example of some of the hard decisions we had to make because we knew we needed technology, K-12, E-12 technology program in the, in the district. Okay, but where are you going to put it? How are you going to fit it in there? So what do we do? And the elementary was the tough piece. We had a five-day rotation with our specialists, you know, FIAE, music, art. And so what we did, went into a six-day rotation. All of a sudden, we had packed board meetings. Because all of a sudden now, we're reducing art, music, and FIAE in the elementary. And it was World War III, but the board stuck with it. And right now, I don't know if I could ever find anyone that doesn't think that was a great idea because we've got this great E-12 technology piece, we've got an online high school and a one-to-one initiative. But that was all part of getting to that piece. We had to start young. So I'm just using that as an example that, you know, you have to set some things on a shelf if you're going to put new things in. And that's also financially too. It shouldn't cost us a lot of new money to implement a strategic plan. Because what you do is, you know, you find ways to, okay, let's not do this, let's do this. Okay, so we, you know, we use, that was one of our golden rules there. You make any changes you want if you can fund it. And, you know, give that to the principals, they got to work on it. So what, what the plan is here is we've got scheduled noon to about 6 o'clock next Thursday. We're using the Lutheran church up here upstairs. But this is the group of people that were assembling. I've asked the principals to get at least six parents from their building, not staff, parents. And that was one of the, and I hate to say a flaw, but one of the things that I first noticed was the makeup of your core planning team. You know, this core planning team should really be heavy external, heavy external, very few internal people. Now, when you get to your action measurement, it should be all internal because now you've taken the, the people in the community saying, here's what we want our schools to be like, and we're going to give it over to the staff and the experts to say, here's how we can get it done. That's their role in this. But we want at least a staff person from each building. We'll have about 18 parents. I want three students, which is a piece that you missed on the last one. You had no students involved with that, and that's a very important piece. The insights that students give are very valuable. In fact, I had a session a couple of weeks ago with the high school seniors and learned a lot, learned a lot from them. We've already got seven business people in town lined up thanks to Dave Brock. Hopefully, we have seven there. I'd like to get a couple of board members on here. I know it's during the day, and then we're going to have a couple, a couple administrators. And one of the pieces here, you know, I want to be very careful not to, we want to honor the work that was done from the last group. But I think it's very important to get new people to take the ball and run with it. Again, because bringing the same people back together has, it's like, oh, we're going to do this again. Because it's a lot of work. It's going to be a very, very, very hard work. So I will leave that up to you, Bob, figure out who we can get from the board to do that. And hopefully, we can get at least two board members, then myself and another, one of the district-level administrators will be on there. So that's roughly around 30-some people, which is a good-sized group, but it's going to be a lot of work for that day. So that's the game plan where we're at right now. And we need to get this meeting done before the holiday break so then we can start getting into, you know, formatting the work, bringing it back to the board and saying, you know, hey, here's what we have. You know, strategic plan is really, it's not a board thing, it's operational, it's how I'm going to get the job done here. But still, you know, you want to give the blessing and away we go. So that's the game plan right now. You know, the goal is to get this thing wrapped up in May as far as our results and what have you. So it's going to be late for budgeting, you know, this thing should drive a budget, but it's going to be late for this year. And actually, for, you know, the building work and what have you, as I mentioned before, we're going to have to go over the knowns we have right now, which is the testing results and say, what do we need to show out? Questions, comments? Show me the door.
No, I appreciate it.
It just, it makes sense, and I got a big whiteboard in the other room. To me, it makes sense, but I got lines going all over, so.
I was covering up words, like, what does this word say?
Well, it's because of my writing, it's the hieroglyphics.
But he leaves it up there so you can study it for a while.
You know what you're getting? You're getting a, you're getting a $70,000 plan here, very cheap. And it's the best plan of, again, the results that we've, we received are, were fantastic, but it was all driven by the strategic plan. And the mission was actually done a couple of years before the plan was done. And so we tied that right in and didn't have to make a change to it because it was, it was so global of what we wanted to do. And I think we're so close on a lot of these different things, but I hope you understand it's not trashing the work that was done, it's just twisting it a little bit to make it, you know, more concise and just pointed so people get it. It'll be a test afterwards.
First strategic plan did have students out because I know Carissa was part of that one. Mr. Duck, Mr. Bird loved that. So I don't know how that changed, how the formulation of it changed, but definitely did.
First strategic plan I was on was way, long time ago.
Should I wear my life in 2009?
We had it at WITC, and it was way before Carissa.
Okay.
And there must have been 50, 60 people there. It was, that was a ton of people, and it was like two, three weekends of planning, and that was one of the very first ones. So it was a, I, it was pretty intense, so, but it was, it's, community members really bought into it.
Sure, we have. But once you get three strategies or four strategies, whatever, I think we, we've got four in our current one here now, you'll have four teams doing work on that at the same time. So again, it's going to be very heavy staff-dominated, which I don't know if we'll have any community people unless we have a technology expert or somebody out there, you know, we can really see on, putting on that, so.
But once you have a good plan, doesn't matter who you are or where you are in the system, it, it should tie directly to the strategic plan. And you should be able to say, I'm doing this because of this. You know, it's pretty simple to operate that.
Well, when anybody comes to me with an idea of what they want to do, show me where it is in the plan.
Correct.
And the other thing I have to be careful too, I've been found a microphone, is where, what plans can sometime, visions and missions can sometime blind people too because they set that vision or mission and, oh, we can't do that because it's not here. You know, that's why it has to be evaluated every year. And that, that core team will be the one that's, will be the one to determine if we make our result statements or not. And we have to prove to that core team, we've achieved this initiative and it's the way we do prac, this is the way we do business from here on up. And if they don't approve it, back to the drawing board. More to come.
Correct.
So there's two.
I'd like to go there.
Board members, you want to? Ready? Anybody else?
I would like to, I am out of town that day. If you're set on that date, I would.
I think I could.
We are, it's the only building, it's the only kind of buildings available, so.
I think it's important to keep it rolling. So since we're out of town and our son is not, maybe you want to put him?
Then you know where he is that night.
Please excuse me, I have to go watch him for.
That's all I got.
I was about to item two now, and Neola discussion.
That way, Neola?
Yep.
There was just a couple of questions last night, just about the process of policies and met with, what's his name, Gus Stube, Gus Stube. He can't, he can't. And actually, he's going to be here Thursday, I think it is, working with us on, we're going to start the whole process of the procedures. What else is he, what is that?
I think just that because that's a.
It's a, because there's no procedures or guidelines, they call them guidelines. I think I'll call them guidelines, administrative guidelines. And they've got templates for that, and so we're going to start the process of doing that. So it's going to be a lot of that coming to, come to the board. You know, we roughly pay him, you know, right around, I think for the whole service that we have for them is probably on $3,000 a year, which really isn't, I mean, that's worth it.
With the administrative guidelines, is there any hosting with that? Or, you know, I mean, like with our policies, they host them and publish them online.
You know, I shouldn't say that because we were talking, we were talking with him with another policy, and I guess here's only two readings? I'm not used to that piece. But you know, with the guidelines, I'm not, I.
And I don't know that they would or wouldn't be, but I was just curious if they maintained the record of it or if we maintained that.
Well, I think we should, you know, I mean, they have to come back to the board. Really, you know, he lays it on me as far as, you know, how do you want to operate with this? Well, I'm not going to operate in a way that's kind of different to what we're on, so it'll come back as, I'll find out if there is a, a reading process for that. I'm almost certain there isn't, what he put it.
Yeah, I don't.
Although Thursday.
If there comes back 500 pages of administrative guidelines, like plenty of time.
I'll give you two weeks. You're not going to get them all at once. Because these are things we got to go through. So it'll probably take a bunch of time.
Chris Moore?
Yeah.
Must as well, up to you.
It is?
Well, you got your choice, Fab Lab?
Well, the France trip.
Course offerings or youth options?
Let's start with the, let's start with the France trip.
Let's start with the, let's start with the France trip.
Okay.
Mary Ann Crawford is here this evening. She put a letter together to ask Mark and I and the board if she can do a school-sponsored trip to France. One that we could publicize using school resources and, and time and have meetings at school and have the school host the trip, much like many other schools in our area do with a wide variety of trips. And so we proposed it to Mark, and Mark said, well, let's bring it here tonight to get your input on it and feedback. You can ask questions about it. I'm gonna let Madame just share a little bit about it because it's a unique trip. It's one that she's putting together more so than going to a company. So I'll let her share a little bit of the background.
We'll post talk to them. Good evening. Good to see you all and very happy I went to school in the 70s on a math discussion, so. I'll survive, all right? It will. So, but getting back to this, yeah, I, just a little background for people, you know, that haven't lived in Somerset all these years, that have been here. I used to take a lot of trips over to France. We would go every other year. I've taken at least 150 people from Somerset over to France and back. And we used to have really large trips, and I don't know why, but there, at one time, you know, it was decided, and I don't know the history on it, it wasn't just the French trips, but the overseas trips and out-of-town trips were canceled and we didn't do them anymore. And I've taken, since that happened, I was only able to take one trip since then to, it's hard to plan them, but we had the recession too, so a lot of different reasons. But this trip that I'm planning right now, the last one I took was with one of these student companies. And this one's kind of outside the box. It's with Time Travels. It's a local travel agency over in the cities. And it's a two-part trip where I'm, I have it where I'd like to pull in community members as well and have parents come as well as, as kids. I have about 15 kids that are interested and five of their parents that are interested. And we would, the, the way it's set up is we would pay in two different parts. They could pay, let's say you have delta miles and you wanna, you know, use them. You'd be able to use those with your kid to go on the trip rather than getting the whole package through the company. And then the second part is everyone buys that part and that's through this company called, it's through Time Travels, but they're called Tour Crafters. And then on the other end, they're gonna meet us with a bus right at the airport. And the way I have it set up, it's a little, it's not so structured. We have maybe three, like tour guides the whole time we're there, but I will act as the guide otherwise. I don't really need a guide. You have to legally, over in France, you have to hire guides for certain monuments and certain places. But we're gonna go to Paris for five days. The trip includes a skip-the-line passes for some of the places that we'll be going. It doesn't include food other than the breakfast anymore because I have found that the kids were not using their French. They were getting shut up and eat meals put in front of them. And sort of, you know, having to eat whatever was put in front of them. And for some reason, they thought that Americans only like chicken. And so that's what they were getting, different forms of chicken. Don't feed the Americans beef. They're afraid of mad cow disease, don't, you know. So I decided this time to pay less for the, you know, the included meals and just have breakfast included. The hotels are four-star hotels rather than two- and three-star hotels. Much nicer and in much better locations where some of these student travel groups are putting some of the kids these days. We're going to go up to Mont Saint Michel in the Normandy region and then have a day and a half actually at, in the beaches of Normandy. A day at the Cannes Memorial Museum. And then be able to go to the American Cemetery. The last trip I went on, and it's standard, they bring you there and they, you've got, okay, you've got an hour in the cemetery and then they bring you down to the beach where you can either eat lunch or you can, you know, walk the beaches. And I just thought that was really cheating our, our group and our, our students of, of the experience of, you know, the, the ties that we have with France. And, and so that, and then we're gonna come back and then probably stay outside of Paris so that it won't be so hard to get to the airport. And Tour Crafters will drop us off at the airport as well. So mainly, you know, I mean, I would, I would love to do this trip with the sanction of the school board. And I would love for there to be maybe in another year or two, probably another year, like something maybe with the Spanish department where we could maybe do a 15-day tour over, you know, and go, go to Europe that way with, you know, do something, you know, where we could collaborate and go. And but I do also realize that, you know, you, you guys have policies and things to look at. So I get it, you know, that if it's like too soon. And then the other piece that I talked to senior about would be kind of fun to teach a, like a community ed class for, you know, adults that would maybe wanna go and travel and, and go with, you know, this, this winter. And if we don't do it this winter again, you know, there's always next year at least, so.
So is that trip open to invite only or is it?
Well, yeah, I think I would have to know the people, but you can go, yeah, sure.
Like a part-plex of French.
He was my student, so.
You say French.
Yeah, yeah. Very good student.
Should I say po?
He just said, I don't know.
My reply, I think it wasn't.
Should I say po? So, yeah, I think so. I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it anyway. It's, you know, a lot of these tour groups, when they bring, they, they don't really encourage that. But I think it would be a real feather in our cap just we talk about including, being inclusive with our community. I mean, I know some teachers that are retired that have asked me, you know, I just think that would be so cool to take retired teachers that have taught some of these kids and, you know.
That aligns with our last conversation with community ads.
Right, right. You know, and something that we offer. Yeah, and something that we offer that's a little bit different than outside the box of how people are used to traveling with these, with these companies. Because this is more, it's, it's much more local.
And when were you thinking of doing it?
Well, I'd like to go this summer, June 18th to the 28th. And I haven't signed any contracts or anything like that. And in my letter to, to, to the powers that be, I just kind of put in, you know, the, the names of the companies and then the itinerary that I just described to all of you. And it just would be nice to other schools in the districts, in the, in the whole area offer overseas trips and, or even out-of-town trips. And it would be really nice if we could get that back. But it's hard to do. I did it without it, but it was really hard and I had a really small amount of, of groups that you have. Because it's, it's, it's hard to do without that school support. And it's so important that the kids come back. Or I had, the last two girls I took were the shyest girls in the whole school. And I can't tell you the kind of confidence that they had coming back and how they felt and sort of the way that they could talk about it in class and, and, you know, kind of show the kids. And even when they were over there, my God, I, I thought they were like this for the first two days. And then all of a sudden, wow, I'm getting this. And then the other person that came with was a, she was a parent that I had taught. And she was there with her daughter. 20 years later, she's like, I'm understanding everything. It just was really neat. And I would like to at least, you know, for the next year or two, that would be just kind of a great way to, to, to see it come back to us. I think it's, it's an awesome thing for any kid, whether they're taking a foreign language. It would be great to collaborate with the history teachers. Miss Cisco is thinking of going and, you know, just to have that, you know. She could maybe do a lecture or two as well, so.
Can I ask what the cost would be?
Yeah, so the cost for this one, again, it's in two parts. So for the, for the, the land portion, meeting at the airport, that's $2,225. Now, and the other great part about that is if I get 15, that's how much it is. But if we get 20, it goes down by about 500 for, for everyone on the trip. So, and then the air portion is of course open. So if you have those delta miles or frequent flyers, you could use that and kind of book your own trip if you had your kid with you. But for the kids that would be traveling with me, it's 1370. And that is, it's kind of a weird, that one is two, about $300 less that she found. We have a layover in Iceland. But we would go to the Blue Lagoon and just kind of chill. And I think that would be a once-in-a-lifetime thing for the kids as well, so.
We did that on the trip over there, it was pretty cool.
Was it cool? Yeah, I've never done it, but, you know. And Andre Zavie from Time Travels said she'd be happy to come over and talk to the parents in the groups as well as soon as they're signed up, so.
So then, and then if you included meals in that, just.
It's a good question. So, so that, that puts it, let's say that puts it at about 36. You know, if we only have 15. But if we get the 20, then it goes down by 500. So I would say the kids would need at least about $500 spending money.
Could you put something together for our board meeting that we can see?
Sure.
That we, you know, so there's more details on our, our, I failed to mention, so.
No problem, yeah.
Comes to me and says, how dare you let my kids go to something?
Right, right.
I don't know. Just, just so we have some type of.
Yeah, I'll just take the letters and information that I sent. Yeah. And again, I mean, I, I totally get if it's, if you feel like, I'm, I'm gonna do this either way with, you know, for this year anyway, I'm gonna try. But, I mean, I would love to get it so that we had this going again at our schools. Be awesome.
I definitely agree.
Thank you.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Just because I like to make it fair for everybody.
Sure.
If there was a student that wanted to go but didn't have the financial means to go, do you have a scholar, some sort of scholarship program set up that community members could, could donate their miles or donate?
That's a good idea. I don't, I, you know, the only thing that I have is, that's why right now, as it stands, we can't do any kind of fundraising unless we, it's outside of the school and not at the school, you know, through our. So I don't, but.
Is that like a policy thing we have to change then?
That's.
There's no change, it just needs your approval for it.
Our permission.
I mean, I would hate to have any kid miss out on the opportunity because of funding. But if they could do scholarships and raise money, you know, to get there, then I think all kids should have this opportunity.
Yeah.
As long as all of them say they can't afford to go.
Well, I think most kids aren't, parents aren't gonna allow that to happen. But there, I'm sure there are some kids that would love to go that it's not even on their list.
Right.
To go, so, I mean.
A lot of the, a lot of these trips for kids and that, you know, they may never get another opportunity. Whether it's Disney World, music, or what have you, you know, if it's an opportunity that they may never have, be able to do again. And when you have someone that's passionate about what they do.
I love it.
If you don't have people like that, those trips don't happen. That's right, but because. Yeah, make it a fortune, make it a lot of.
It's so much fun. I mean, I would love to bring all of you because it is just so awesome. Let me tell you, I know where to shop.
We could make it a board requirement that we have. Chaparrals, seven chaparrals.
Have we identified what policies would need to be updated?
No, I haven't.
I don't believe there are any policies that need to be updated.
There probably isn't.
They, they currently say.
I think there might be, yeah, I don't know.
There's probably a district travel policy, but whether it needs to be updated, I would have to get that.
Everything I was able to find said it just needs district administrator and board approval. Other, without that, there's no overnight sales.
And waivers?
I don't know about the waivers.